We're going to get started. Good evening, the tw- the this twenty-fourth meeting of the seventy-third term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us meeting virtually, please note that I recognize you by saying your name. Once I recognize you, please state your name and begin to speak. For members of the general public who are used to seeing us on Mondays, we know that this is a Thursday. And this is a statutory requirement in Baltimore City Charter that on this Thursday that we meet to close out our legislative year. So thanks for joining us twice this week. I know many of you tune in on a regular basis. Were able to see your council hard at work on Monday and you get to see us again today. So again, thank you for joining us this evening. We're going to have our showcase because we're going to go to our showcase first. Is Bishop, is Bishop? We on? She's not. So we're going to jump to the showcase first. On this evening showcase, Baltimore presentation will be given by Sarah Fawcett of Aziza Peace, often referred to as AP. On this organization uses arts, fashion, fitness, music, and mentoring to help girls, gender expansive, and the LGBTQ youth address mental health and personal development challenges. Ms. Sarah, the floor is yours. I'm sorry, you are on mute, Ms. Fawcett. No, I can't, we can't hear you. You can hear us, but we can't hear you. Are you, did you, are you still on mute? No, I see your mouth moving, but um.
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you perfectly.
Yeah, maybe for technology, okay? Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Saran Fawcett. I am the Executive Director of Aziza Peace. Thank you for the introduction. I um. I'm not used to being in this part. I'm used to being on the back end making things happen, so bear with me. Speaking is not my go-to. Aziza Peace was started in two thousand eight. Aziza means precious, gorgeous, powerful, and peace is an acronym representing positive energy and cultivating excellence. We are in school, after school, and a summer program. We serve high schools and we've been in communities, including Drew um, Drew, Drew Heights, Drew Park. We have connections with um the Mr. Presley and Ms. Fisher there where we've been in Douglas High School, Forest Park High School. This year, we're in Independence High School and Connections High School. When COVID happened, COVID was a very interesting time for Aziza Peace. We have been very impactful in the lives of young people. We serve fourteen to twenty-four-year-olds. And our retention rate is high. We almost serve as a family for those young people. So when COVID happened, I realized that we needed to continue the work because I understood that if we didn't, the impact that it was going to have on our young people besides the academic impact, the learning loss, the social part, the family piece, the loss that was happening all around for those young people, especially our LGBT population and our girls, some of our girls. Some of our girls, just for the record, were in schools typically for thirty young people. Most spaces, more than half of those girls are raped or molested by a family member or friend. So when we're dealing with my population in COVID, those girls are no longer in safe spaces. School is the safe space. The LGBT population, they couch surf because of rejection and homelessness. So COVID looked different for them. So what did I, you know, what did we have to do? So right before COVID happened, we do an annual fashion show called Strut. And Strut, we use my, because my world is fashion. I connect with my long-term friends and we put a fashion show together that I hope to be the Victoria's Secret Fashion Show for young people as we move forward. This year, eight was our eighth Strut. We have four hundred and fifty-four guests at Strut and thirty-five young people modeling and performing. Right after that, the world shut down. One week later, we were online. We served our youth on Zoom three days a week and on the weekend, hosting socials and, and, and conversations to help with social and emotional development because we knew what they were going through. We um moved forward like, like it was life as normal, where we know that it wasn't normal. We, we tried to maintain their, their pieces best we could. Moving forward, we um hosted movie night in October, November. We did voting, the importance of voting. We connected with Black Girl Vote and did a whole campaign for voting. We practiced outside. We have a step team host stage breakers. They practiced virtually. We, we, we did everything we could to stay connected to young people. We did a summer program in connection with Youth Works as we have since two thousand thirteen. We hosted fifty young people virtually, five days a week or five weeks with Youth Work. Moving into the school year, they did not return to school. We stayed online as an after-school program. We did midday chat and choose. We stayed connected through hybrid activities. We in February did a whole Black History thing and looked at Alvin Ailey. We stayed connected to young people. In March, we did Strut. We practiced for Strut. We had three hundred people at Strut at the Hilton Max socially distanced and we livestreamed. We did not stop serving young people. And for us, um we are one of the young, we are one of the organizations that were harmed by Strong City. We were funded by Baltimore City, Baltimore City Youth Fund and could not get our money because we were attached to Strong City. And so for several months, me and my team continued to serve young people without being paid because we're committed to that work. And so um moving forward, we got the money and kept going. So we had Strut, we had our B conference. We have an annual B conference where we invite young people to deal with leadership and character development. We had that in April. We're practicing for, for Strut now. It's business as usual for us because we know that the young people we serve need us. And um changing the, the way we deliver was one thing, but not delivering was not a thing, even though we were dealing with unprecedented times. So our norm is our new norm, which is virtual. We are now back in school, after school, one of the few programs that are serving young people after school. And we still on a virtual platform. We are planning activities and after-school trips because we do address cultural enrichment. We are um planning a weekend, a holiday weekend, next weekend to deal with leadership, team building, and healing because COVID has definitely impacted things. And thank you, Ken, for putting the link for the Strut tickets in the chat. I appreciate that. That's, that is who we are. I do the work we that I do because I believe that if young people fall in love with themselves, they will fall in love with it, with the, the reality that it is necessary to be the change that they want to see. They'll feel empowered to use their voices. They'll get on SBA. They will commit to academic excellence. They will go to school because they love themselves. And so I am privileged enough to do what I love with love for the sake of love and Aziza Peace works because love wins. Fundamentally, that's who we are.
Thank you so much for that presentation, Ms. Sharon. What we'll do is we will put the link on the Balt Council Facebook as well as Instagram page as well for the two thousand and twenty-two Strut Walk. Thank you for coming and presenting to the council. Know that to all members in your packet that was provided for today's meeting, a brochure pamphlet of the, of the organization is also included in there. Let's help them spread the word and continue to support folks that support our community. Again, thank you on behalf of the Baltimore City Council.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Have an amazing day. At this time, we do not have Bishop. We are on yet. I'm not sure if she's having some technical issues. So if council members could take a thirty-second pause and just reflect. Thank you. At this time, whether you have a flag on your computer or behind you, please turn to your flag and state the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for that. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could, please call the role of the members.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Block, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. I believe we only, we're only missing Councilwoman Porter at this point. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the December sixth, twenty twenty-one proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Communications from the mayor can be found at the beginning of page two of the agenda. We'll now turn to executive nominations. Madam Clerk, if you could, please read the first nomination.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero seven five, Daniel M. Billing, Member Auctioneer Advisory Board.
This nomination has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee. Madam Clerk, the next nomination.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero seven six, Jamar Brown, Member Retirement Savings Plan Board of Trustees.
This nomination has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee. Madam Clerk, the next nomination.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero seven seven, Paul Cooper, Member Auctioneer Advisory Board.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero seven eight, Kevin Daniels, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero seven nine, Bernadine Kimball, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
And this is also assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. There are no ordinances to be introduced this evening. We'll now move to a resolution being introduced for the first reading. Madam Clerk, if you could, please read in the resolution.
City Council Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero eight five R, Charter Review Commission Establishing Resolution for the purpose of establishing the inaugural Charter Review Commission, appointing certain members of the commission, providing for a certain date to commence the duties and work of the Charter Review Commission, providing for a certain completion date, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This resolution comes from Mayor Scott and accomplishes something that's a little bit overdue. During the last term, the council, as well as Mayor Young, passed and the voters affirmed a change to the city charter requiring us to convene a commission to engage in open and public process to holistically review the city charter and recommend updates. This commission was supposed to be convened in May, but with many of us, as well as the mayor being new to the positions, it was on the back burner and we're here today. This resolution will permit the commission to get to work needed, that's required through the charter, for its members to be appointed, as well as look forward to the council receiving their report next year for legislative action. At this point, I would like to recognize Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for waiving of the rules to or suspension of the rules to allow for immediate adoption of this resolution this evening.
Without adoption, without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are now suspended. I'd like to turn it back to you, Councilmember Dorsey. You're on mute, Councilmember.
All right. I'd like to move for adoption of the resolution, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this point, Madam Clerk, if you could call roll.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, Councilmember McCray, Dorsey.
Mr. President, if I can make a comment on my vote here for just one second?
Yes, one hundred percent.
I appreciate it. I just wanted to note that I was a little taken aback by the fact that this resolution does not have the names of the appointees on it. And upon looking at the language in the charter, which established this commission, I found the peculiar, found it peculiar that in the section where the charter says manner of appointment, rather than describing a manner of appointment, it simply lists the membership makeup of the commission where under other commissions in the charter, it says, it would say something like makeup of the commission in general and then list. And if there's some diversion from the normal appointment process, you would find that in a separate section. In this case, where I believe it should be is under manner of appointment. And I would hope that in the future, ten years from now, when this is coming before a future city council, on which, of which I will no longer be a member, the, that, that those names of those members would be able to be included on the resolution because I think it's important for posterity that we have a clear and searchable record of who is serving on these commissions in perpetuity for the future history of the city. And so I hope that this is something, in, in fact, that this charter commission will recommend to be changed in the charter. But with that, I am still happy to support this moving forward, happy to see it going forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. Point well taken, Councilman Dorsey. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Block, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The motion is approved. The les, the resolution has been adopted. Next, we're going to turn to the consent calendar. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries and the calendar is now approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. At this point, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
There's a motion on the floor that we go into short titles for the remainder of the meeting. If I do not hear any, we'll just do a motion. Is there, is, we'll do a second. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say, it's, it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. We are in short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Madam Clerk, for a second reading, if you could read in Bill twenty-one dash zero zero eight seven.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero eight seven, rezoning one hundred East Twenty-third Street, twenty-three hundred Saint Paul Street, twenty-three zero five Saint Paul Street, twenty-three one three Saint Paul Street, and twenty-three one seven Saint Paul Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I would like to ask the Vice President of this council and Chair of the Economic Community Development Committee to, I would like to recognize Sir and yield the floor to her.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty-one dash zero zero eight eight seven was heard on December seventh, twenty twenty-one. Finding of facts should be in council members' folders. I move finding of facts.
Second. There's a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. All those in favor of moving the finding of facts, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The finding of facts are now approved. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee also approved an amendment for this bill. I move the amendment.
So moved.
There's amendment that we, that the, to accept the committee amendments. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are now adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seven, seconded to move the bill forward, favorable as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill is approved as amended. Onto twenty-one dash one one nine, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one one nine, rezoning one two zero one, South Haven Street and a portion of Boston Street.
I'd like to recognize the Chair as well as Vice Chair of this committee and Vice President of the Baltimore City Council, Ms. Sharon Green Middleton. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Twenty-one dash oh one one nine was heard, also heard on December seventh, twenty twenty-one. I move the findings of fact.
There's a motion on the floor. It's been moved and properly seconded to push forward the finding of facts. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
And the committee approved a technical amendment for the bill. I move the amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to move the committee amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are now adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's a motion on the floor. It's been moved and properly seconded to move the bill favorable as amended. For those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill is approved as amended. Madam Clerk, on to Council Bill twenty-one dash one two zero.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one two zero, Urban Renewal Canton Industrial Area Amendment.
Madam Vice President, I'd like to recognize you at this time. The floor is yours.
Twenty-one dash oh one two, was heard on December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. The committee approved a technical amendment for the bill. I move the amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Say nay. The ayes have it. The technical amendment is now adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill is, is approved as amended. Now colleagues, the Rules and Oversight Committee met this afternoon to consider an executive nomination. I believe this was a priority of the mayor's team. They reached out to us regarding this time-sensitive item for this particular appointment. In courtesy, we went forth with it. And I would like to recognize Chairman Schleifer to speak on behalf of this amendment, this bill.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to invoke Council Rule ten eleven B two to waive the hopper deadline and permit introduction of a late committee report.
That was a motion on the floor. It's been moved and properly seconded. We are voting on Rule ten dash eleven B two, which allows councils to permit a late introduction of committee report following affirmative vote of a majority of its members. All those in favor permitting the introduction of this committee report, please say aye.
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 Say nay. The ayes have it. That being a majority in support, the committee report may be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could, please read in the nomination.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero seven three, Harry Mayo, Member Licensing for Towing Services Board.
At this point, I would like to recognize the Chairman of the Committee. Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held a hearing on EA twenty-one dash zero zero seven three. Harry Mayo for the towing and licensing board. The committee heard this nomination at two PM today, and I would like to move the nomination favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of moving forth with this executive nomination, please say aye.
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 Please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. Bills on third reading. We now turn to third reading for final passage. The clerk will read the bills in. Madam Clerk, if you could read in twenty-one dash zero zero eight three.
Twenty-one dash zero zero eight three, Franchise Gas Regulator Station Utility at Lower Gwynne's Falls Park. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Block, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, if we could go on to twenty-one dash zero, twenty-one dash zero one two two, please.
Twenty-one dash zero one two two, franchise installation of five utilities, duct banks.
At this point, I would like, at this point, I would like to recognize the Vice President of the Council, Ms. Sharon Green Middleton. The floor is yours.
Mr. President, I would like to offer an amendment on the floor. Was this bill twenty-one dash zero one two three?
Two, two. But we're doing the same thing for both bills.
Oh, okay. For one, two, two.
Yeah, one, two, one, two, three.
Okay. I have an amendment to this bill which can be found on my colleague's desk. The amendment fills in the blank on page two, line twenty-four, with a recommended annual fran- franchise free fee of nine hundred and ten dollars. This is the fee amount that was recommended by Department of Transportation when the council heard this bill and which was approved by the Board of Estimates on December eighth. I move the amendment.
There a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of this amendment, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. Approved per City Council Rule twelve dash three B. This bill will be held over until next meeting, so will not come out a third reader today. Madam Clerk, if you could, please read in twenty-one dash zero one two three in third reading.
Twenty-one dash zero one two three, franchise underground conduit and fiber optic cable.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, I would like to recognize the Vice President of the City Council, Ms. Sharon Green Middleton. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment from the floor on this bill. I have an amendment to this bill which can be found on, on my colleague's desk. The amendment fills in the blank on page two, line thirty-two, with a recommended fan- franchise fee of zero dollars. The Department of Transportation recommended waiving the franchise free fee when the council heard this bill and that recommendation was approved by the Board of Estimates on December eighth. I move the amendment.
It's a motion on the floor. Is it properly seconded?
Second.
It is. It's moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This amendment is approved. And again, just for consistency, per the City Council Rule twelve dash three B, this bill being held, will be held over until our next meeting. At this point, we're clearing all bills that, status lists, which can be found on page ten of the agenda. At this point, anything still on this list will have its status updated as withdrawn. It's actually on page twelve now. It's been moved to page twelve. So you could look to page twelve on today's agenda. And again, at this point, anything still on that list will have its status updated to withdrawn. At this point, we're going to go to committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear committee, please proceed with your committee announcement. First up is Madam Vice President, Sharon Green Middleton, Economic Community Development. The floor is yours.
No announcements today. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam VP. Next up, we're going to go to Education, Workforce, and Youth. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
No announcement, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes. Next up, we're going to go to Health, Environment, and Technology. Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
No announcements. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Next up, we're going to go to Public Safety and Government Operations. Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a couple.
You always have announcements.
I do. I feel like I do. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at one oh five PM to hear Bill twenty-one dash zero one zero six, Study Report Oversight of the Baltimore City Fire Department at the request of Councilmember Chris Burnett. This, of course, will be virtually. We'll also be hearing Bill twenty-one dash zero one zero seven, also on Wednesday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at one oh six PM virtually. And this is a study report of operations of the Baltimore City Fire Department at the request of Councilmember Chris Burnett. We'll be hearing, the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be hearing Bill twenty-one dash zero one six four on Wednesday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at one oh seven PM virtually. And this is the Decennial Fire and Emergency Medical Services Redistricting Plan at the request of Councilmember Chris Burnett. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be hearing Bill LO twenty-one dash zero 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 six on Wednesday, January fifth, twenty twenty-one, at one PM virtually. And this is the Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan at the request of myself. Still not done. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be hearing Bill twenty-one dash zero zero four zero R on Wednesday, January fifth, twenty twenty-one, at one oh one PM virtually. hearing Bill 21-0040R on Wednesday, January 5, 2021, at 1:01 p.m. virtually. It's an informational hearing on crime prevention through environmental design at the request of myself. The committee will be hearing Bill 21-0094 on Wednesday, January 19, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. virtually. And this is the Public Safety Apprenticeship Program Establishment at the request of Councilmember Burnett. We'll be hearing LO 21-0015 on Wednesday, January 19, 2021, at 1:01 p.m. virtually. And this is the Baltimore City Fire Department EMS Stat and Operations hearing at the request of myself. And we'll be hearing Bill 21-0094 on Wednesday, February 2, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. virtually. And this is the investigative hearing of the Baltimore City Police Department Disciplinary and Complaint Process at the request of Councilmember Burnett. And that's all she wrote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point, we're going to go to Rules and Legislative Oversight. Chairman Schleifer, you're on. Do you have anything to add?
No announcements. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Schleifer. And then up next, last but certainly not least, Ways and Means. Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ways and Means Committee will hold the hearing on Tuesday, January 11 at 10:00 a.m. on Council Bill 21-0159, procurement zero emission vehicles at the request of Councilman Conway. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. That concluding our...
Mr. President?
I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a correction on one of the announcements that I made.
Sorry, yes, sir.
So I'll reread it in. It was the last announcement. So the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting to hear Bill 21-009, excuse me, 78R, as opposed to 0094. I misstated that initially. And that'll be Wednesday, February 2, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. virtually. And that's the investigative hearing, Baltimore City Police Department Disciplinary and Complaint Process. So once again, that's 0078R.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
That will conclude our committee announcements. We're going to move on to regular announcements. I have one. I'm going to jump in front of you, Councilwoman Odette Ramos. I knew you were about to smile. I was going to say your name soon. But this is about the inaugural toy drive that we're going to have here with the City Council in holiday celebration. We've partnered with the movement team to collect toys and give a little joy to our young folks here in the city of Baltimore. We postponed it because we thought the meteorologists were going to be correct and right, but they were wrong yesterday. But we postponed it to next Wednesday. That's December the 15th. Drop off could be right here at City Hall if you want to just come and bring an unwrapped. Let me get the actual description. We're looking for new unwrapped and nonviolent toys for youth of ages between 2 and 12. Now, you can come and drop them off, or you can also stay and hang out with myself and some of the other council members and enjoy some holiday cheer. Students from the Baltimore School for the Arts will be performing. Walk by Faith Ministries praise team will be performing. And we were fortunate enough to secure hot chocolate and coffee from Starbucks and some amazing locally-made donuts from Blondie's. If you have any additional information, you can always contact my office at 410-396-4804, or email Cory.Ramos, that's C-O-R-I dot R-A-M-O-S at BaltimoreCity.gov. The last thing I would like to add is, again, you can come hang out with us. You can come drop off a toy. If you cannot come, but you still would like to support young folks in our city in need, there is also a PayPal link. That PayPal link is CCP, as in City Council President, CCP Toy Drive. So that's C-C-P Toy Drive at gmail.com. With that, I'll turn it over to other members of the floor for any additional regular announcements. And of course, without fail, the amazing Council...
I didn't make my last meeting, so I broke my streak last meeting.
Amazing Councilwoman from the 14th District, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I hope you don't mind, but I would like to just reflect on this last year. It's a year ago tomorrow that we were all sworn in. And, you know, this has been a really great year for me, one of the hardest jobs I've ever had, and the one I love the most. And, you know, the time management between constituent work and legislative, I've met so many great people, learned so much. I know more about the pipes underground than I ever thought I could or would, learned so much from all of you. And so I want to thank you all for your solicited and unsolicited advice for our first-timer, but also for just being committed to the city and all working together. I want to thank my staff for being wonderful and being able to, you know, accomplish a lot this year. I'm very proud of all of our accomplishments, both at the constituent level and the legislative level for District 14. And obviously, to our constituents that we serve, I'm grateful every day for the opportunity to serve. So it's been a great year, and I'm very excited for more. Thank you.
No, thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Are there any additional regular announcements? No one else has a year in ramp up?
Oh, Mr. President.
Madam Vice President.
I just, I'd just like to say that three of us are multitasking, basically, as we speak. Myself, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, and Councilmember Antonio Glover are here at the Maryland Association of Counties Winter Conference, attending many workshops. And tonight, we'll be swearing in the new members of legislative committees and other committees. I will continue to serve as the, on the board for the council of Mako, not on the executive board. Others are rotation, so all the officers move around. We will be installing a new president, the council member from Tobit County. And we did recognize last night, very important, a former colleague, Councilwoman Rochelle Ricky Spector, received the, a very prestigious award for the Maryland Association of Counties, and that's the Maryland J. Praesner Public Service Award, which is usually given to a former president, councilperson, retired. And she is still working hard, and she got that prestigious award last night. So Baltimore City is showing strong and getting stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Any additional announcements? I have one bittersweet announcement. I'm pretty sure you guys have received the word, but Yvonne Winger, she's going away from us, but not far. She's going to the Arch-Dasi, where she is going to oversee some of their community engagement and government work. So really, really excited for the new opportunity for her. It's a sad loss for the citizens of Baltimore and for our office at City Council. But again, she won't be that far away, and we're excited for her new opportunity. So Yvonne Winger, congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work, particularly as relates to this year that we've been faced with tremendous amount of obstacles, but also a tremendous amount of success and victory. So thank you, Yvonne. With that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Madam Vice President.
And, Mr. President, there's one more. Your legislative director and present clerk...
Okay, I've been...
It's an honor.
Unfortunately, you are embarrassing her, and I embarrass her enough. But Nikki, the award-winning Thompson, you're exactly correct. Our legislative director here, or for the City Council President, was recognized by Daily Record as a leading woman, 40 Under 40 in the city of Baltimore. So Nikki works harder than anybody else in this building. She constantly dedicates herself and her service to the citizens of Baltimore. You know, I constantly talked about trying to drive a more professionalized council, where we were developing substantive, substantive legislation, and really getting at the core of what this legislative body is about, by not just looking at it from a constituent services perspective, but also try to develop policies that go after, again, the systemic issues that plagued our city for far too long. And Nikki, whenever I come up with my crazy ideas, literally sits at the core of that. And it's amazing to see the city of Baltimore recognize her for her amazing work. So Nikki, I get to embarrass you one more time, but thank you, thank you, thank you, and congratulations. We also need to...
Mr. President?
Yep. You're going to talk about...
I want, I want to intervene, because there are two other folks I want to recognize as well. One being, of course, my wife. My wife was also one of the 40 Under 40 awardees as well, Sarah Conley.
You didn't tell us that. We didn't know. What's going on, man?
She, she moves in silence. Real G's move in silence. Yeah, really, really proud of her. And, you know, I literally cannot do this job and raise two amazing children without her. So incredibly proud of her. And then Amy, Amy from Legislative Reference also was acknowledged as well. So just wanted to put that on the radar.
You just had to jump the gun and take the Amy reference away from me. It's cool, Mr. Chair.
I didn't know if you saw it. Sorry.
It's all good. No, but we want to recognize all the folks that we come in contact with that, again, either care for us personally, but also work with us professionally. And it's a really nice award. Look forward to being able to attend a lot more of those things in person going forward as we continue to battle with COVID. At this point, I'd like to recognize Madam Vice President to close us out.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, January 10, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. And may we have a moment of silence for the now 319 homicides year-to-date, and also the COVID-19 deaths since beginning of the pandemic, which is now 1,250. And of course, our continued families that suffer from the opioid epidemic. May we have this moment of silence. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. At this time, we're going to take a moment of silence. Thank you. There being no new business before the desk, this will conclude the 24th meeting of this 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.